I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As a reminder, if there anybody who would like to give a couple of comments, we have public comments speaking cards in the back. You can fill them out and give them to our board secretary. Our first item is our student presentation and our recognition for South Meadows Middle School Superhawks.
Thank you all for being here this evening. I have the pleasure of introducing our guest for this evening. The Superhawks are a group of students at South Meadows Middle School who work during their advisory period to build social connections by promoting activities for all students. In the near future, the Superhawks will coordinate using the student population to form the words "be kind" in our field. This activity will serve to kick off our Respect Campaign to correspond with previous campaigns of anti-bullying and kindness. The Superhawks are looking forward to attending the HSD Unified Student Summit on April 17th at Liberty High School. Their directors and counselor, Juana Vera Rocha, and teacher, Mabel Key.
Hello, my name is Davi Budan and I'm a Superhawk at South Meadows Middle School. I can tell you that Superhawks is a group of students trying to break down barriers and be more inclusive to all the students in South Meadows Middle School.
My name's Amanda Higgins. I'm an awesome student at South Meadows Middle School in the Superhawks Advisory. And our biggest challenge right now is breaking down boundaries. And I believe that's very specific to our advisory, but we hope to spread it to other advisories in our school in the future. So, one of the activities at our school that we've done so far to try to bring the school together and share the same type of philosophy that we do, thank you, at our advisory is rock, paper, scissors. We went to the Special Olympics Conference where to get to know everybody better and to try to like break the ice, we had a huge game of rock, paper, scissors where it was everybody versus everybody until there was one person left standing in the room. So, we pitched this idea to our administrators and we were able to do that in the school. And our winner went up against the teacher. The teacher won. It was still a pretty good way to like get everybody together. It was very nice, the school enjoyed it. And we plan on doing more activities like that in the future. And this is another picture from the conference where all the people brought together. We also did other activities. We had a leadership class, also brought more people together. We learned a little bit more about how to include other people. Right now, we're going into advisories to try to learn about kindness. Sorry. We're going into advisories to try to learn about kindness because we've heard some comments at our school and we'd like to replace those comments with nicer words and more inclusion for everybody. This was part of the rock, paper, scissors tournament. I believe that was our winner, Gio, right there. This is a picture of our advisory working on the kindness posters. One of the... The, I think it was an activity. One of the activities we did earlier this week was Be a Hero. You can start by helping people out at lunch if you may not have very many friends. We also have kindness posters up around the school. It helps to do acts of kindness. We can catch them on camera. We can make compilations and we can make people's lives better.
I was gonna elaborate on the last slide. What we're doing for Be a Hero is the Superhawks. We, so we made those posters and we put them around the school. There were some in the comments, some by the student store, places where most, most students go to during lunch and their passing time. And everybody in the advisories, we went into the advisories and we encouraged them to write down a random act of kindness that they could do for anybody around the school or at home. And next to the, usually next to those or in easy-to-reach places, there was random act of kindness posters. So, after you were done finishing the sticky note, this has led to a lot of acts of kindness caught by our cameras, so I'm sure our principal enjoyed watching all of those. And yeah, after you're done, you just put it on the random act of kindness posters. And I think at this point, they're like evening out the posters on, sticking us on the Be a Hero poster and on the random act of kindness posters. So, it's always good to see people like starting to talk to new people based on what's going on with the Be a Hero. Peer mediation. Some of the Superhawks were trained during the first semester. We're gonna start a little bit earlier, but things like kind of scheduled off. So, peer mediation is, you're gonna start in the second semester and it's basically like a first option where something's not big enough to reach like the counselor level or talking to an adult. It's more trying to, well, the peer mediated trained students are talking and between two students. So, they're kind of like trying to work things out between those two students. Not necessarily pitching ideas, but more just leading the questions on to help them better understand each other and avoiding conflicts that could turn into counseling, like going to the counselor's office or even meeting the principal. So, that's something that we're working on so far. Lastly, the Superhawks is a group of students that represent all of the student body. Some of us are not like straight students and still struggling in classes, but everybody is trying to contribute to the South Meadows community and we're all working on trying to be included. Like she was talking about earlier, we went to the inclusive Special Olympics. So, we incorporated one of their ideas, the rock, paper, scissors tournament. And it was, it was really fun. It was like kind of everybody getting to know each other based on just the simple game of rock, paper, scissors around the school. And it was a, it was a very good experience because it was between teachers and students. So, everybody could talk and enjoy the moment. And it wasn't just like a popularity competition, which is a lot that goes on in middle school, high school. So, it was whoever won. They, so it started off in the classes and the advisories and they would play rock, paper, scissors. And if you won, the person who lost became your cheerleader. So, then we had whole advisories chanting for one person. And then they went into the pods and they fought like rock, paper, scissors pod against those advisories. And so, you could have somebody that not really a lot of people know their name and the whole school was chanting their name at the end. So, it was a very like open-ended thing that anybody could join and like learn about and be included. It was a very good experience. Thank you.
What day are you spelling out "be kind"?
We're still working on that. I hope you'll let me know.
Please let us know.
Are you the only advisor?
No, mine is...
We are.
Oh, well, here, come up.
Let me get your picture together. Who's ever involved, this is here. And how many students do you have together?
We have 28 students. And the advisory is made up of, I'm the life skills teacher, and the advisory has students from SED and Honors Row and all of, all of, all of. So, it's very inclusive.
Very good. It sounds wonderful. Thank you so much. And one more, one more next time.
Please let us know when the "be kind" gets to you.
Pardon?
Yes, we will. So, we didn't mind the weather and...
So, the next item on our agenda, I wanted to come up here for our next item because in honor of Black History Month in February, we want to make sure that we acknowledge all the contributions that our Black community has contributed to the America that it is today. And also say now that, this morning, I actually went to a presentation at Washington County and the City Hillsborough, and it was a really fantastic celebration and acknowledgement. But also, just a reminder that Black History is all of our history because without the contribution we wouldn't be who we are today as a nation. So, I just wanna read our proclamation for tonight. The Hillsborough School District celebrates the 150th anniversary of the ratification of the 15th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, which granted African-American members the right to vote. And the 150th anniversary of the first Black American to serve in Congress, around levels of racism. The Hillsborough School District honors and acknowledges the central role of African-Americans in U.S. history. The Hillsborough School District is committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion and rejects the long history of institutional racism towards Black Americans. The Hillsborough School District pledges to stand against bigotry, intolerance, and hate and follow the lead set by generations of Black Americans who have courageously led us to the pursuit of equality. The Hillsborough School District has been enriched by the diversity of perspective and experience of our Black community members who have made valuable and long-lasting contributions to our district. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School Districts do hereby proclaim the month of February 2020 to be Black History Month. We urge you all community members to continue to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of Black Americans to the development and prosperity of our community.
Now you have to follow me back a little bit. Our next item on the agenda.
I'm going to agree with you on this right now.
Has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Lira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is audience time. And I have some comment, public comment cards up here. Do we have any? So, the group that I have up here, I think it's on the same topics. I will invite all of you to come up at once and you can rotate at the mic where you're intent to speak. We have Una Mayer, Kristy Thompson, Lindsay Lindebell, Amy Aberley, and Angela Exum.
Good evening. Thank you for being welcome to hear us. My name is Una Mar. I'm a kindergarten teacher and first grade teacher here at Lincoln Street at, or here in Hillsborough School District, currently serving at Lincoln Street School, Elementary School. This summer has started a whole lot of surveys talking about SSA funds, where they should go and looking for input. And one of the priorities that people had was class size. This was a priority among the public and among teachers that gave their input into this, these surveys. I know we're in the 11th hour of drafting our input for this grant and how we're going to write it, but even in the 11th hour, there's time for change. As we were hearing that there would be class size reduction in Hillsborough as teachers, we were very happy to hear this. Our students are in a lot of need. There's varying needs in our classroom and this is hugely amplified and magnified in the kindergarten classrooms. It has been recently brought to our attention or noticed by people that that class size reduction seems to be in the grades 1 through K. 1 through 12, sorry, 1 through 12. So, here to represent myself as a kindergarten teacher, as I no longer will have a child in kindergarten, but my friends who will have children in the kindergarten area, the kindergarten teachers here with me and those who are not, and we urge you to consider changing that number and possibly reducing the class sizes in kindergarten. I have taught, have had the luxury of teaching in a variety of countries as well as states and taught in Ireland when we had 15 to 1 mandated ratio in our classrooms. And that may seem unreal, but it was very possible and real and meant we could form a relationship with all of our students. This September, I had the opportunity of having just kindergarten for two weeks before I was changed to be a kinder first grade classroom. So, I had the absolute luxury of having 14 students in my care. And I can tell you in those two weeks with 14 students, we made a huge difference, only in two weeks. It meant I could make, form a relationship with every student every day and have the possibility of giving those students a great start. If I had that all year, I'm going to make a huge difference. So, I won't talk for the whole time. I have some colleagues here to give their opinions.
My name's Kristy Thompson. I teach at Patterson Elementary School and I am a kindergarten teacher. And I just want to share some numbers of ratios in K-3 across the United States. Alabama's 1 to 18, Arkansas is 1 to 20. California, just right, our neighbor, is, they have a higher one at 32 or 33, but to avoid penalties, they can't go above that mark for grades 1 through 3. Connecticut uses grant funding to keep kindergarten and K-3 at 1 to 18. K-3 in Delaware is 1 to 22. Florida, 1 to 18, K-3. Georgia, 1 to 15 and 1 to 17 up to the grades 3. Idaho, again really close to us, they're 1 to 20 for K-3. Iowa, they are expected, the districts are instructed and expected to reduce class sizes to 1 to 17 for grades K-3. Kentucky is 1 to 24. Louisiana, 1 to 20. Maine, 1 to 25. Massachusetts, 1 to 25. Minnesota is 1 to 17. Mississippi is 1 to 25. Missouri, 1 to 25. Montana, 1 to 20. Nevada, 1 to 16, 1 to 18 for grades 3. New Hampshire, 1 to 25. New Jersey, 1 to 25. New Mexico, 1 to 15. North Carolina, 1 to 18. Ohio, 1 to 25. Oklahoma, 1 to 20. With a full-time assistant. If they don't have 1 to 20, they go to 2 to 22 with 2 to 29 with an assistant. Rhode Island, ideal is 1 to 15 and they use grant funds to keep it at 1 to 15. South Carolina is 1 to 21. Tennessee is 1 to 25 with goals of 1 to 20 for K-3. Texas, 1 to 20. Virginia, 1 to 24 or 2 to 29 with assistance. It just, it goes on. And Washington, again, our neighbor, is 1 to 17, just right across the border. 1 to 17 in K-3. West Virginia, 1 to 20, 1 to 25 for grades 1 through 6. Wisconsin is 1 to 18 or 2 to 30. And Wyoming is 1 to 16. It's possible. 32 states have made it possible, made it a priority. It's hard to wear a shirt that says "Kid First" or "Proud to be HSD. I know we can do this. I know we can get there." We're really close. Being able to influence our youngest learners right at this time is very important and it's doable.
Hi, my name is Emily Lee and this is my sixth year teaching kindergarten at REBEL. And every year we're seeing a lot more students impacted by trauma. And sadly, academics are often put on hold because we're addressing, as the only teacher in the classroom, behavior needs, social, emotional needs, and there's a lack of support to help us in the classroom. The physical needs are not being met. And if we could start in kinder, teaching them the skills that they need to resolve these problems, how to regulate themselves when they're feeling in the red zone and the blue zone, then I think we could set them up for success for the rest of their kindergarten, all the way through 12th grade and on as college and career ready.
My name's Amy Aberley. I'm a Hall of Fame team kinder worker right there. I am also a kindergarten teacher at REBEL Elementary School. I also want to touch on the issue of trauma because last year when teachers participated in the walkout in the sea of signs, what you saw most of was signs about class size and something about mental health. And I don't think it's a coincidence that those are the two most common because I also think they're very tied. If you think about the high numbers of students, but you also think about the higher incidence of trauma. More kids coming in that are very impacted, they need more support. And so, if you put on top of that, you have higher needs students, you're putting higher numbers, we're not gonna be able to make the same impact that we would make if the students were in a smaller class and were able to give them more individualized support. So, like a lot of the colleagues are saying, kindergarten can be a child's first school experience. So, think about if you set them up for success in kindergarten, how as they go through the grade levels, they'll continue to grow and make, and make those gains that we need them to make every year. But really kindergarten needs to build that foundation.
Hello, I am a kindergarten teacher in the district and I was attendance in the board meeting on the 11th. A board member had asked about how class size ratios are formed. And I just wanted to share that ratios, you know, they are an average even when they're put in place. We have had kindergarten classes of 30 and sometimes even more than that. I taught kindergarten for seven years and before that taught preschool for many years. I decided to enter the career of early childhood education because after undergrad, I worked at a homeless day shelter. From the homeless, I heard story after story of adverse early childhood experiences impacting education, mental health, and job retention for a lifetime. What would happen in our schools and in our society if we prioritized a strong, solid, supportive start in students' academic journey rather than intervening and picking up the pieces for years later? Every year, the challenges you need to kindergarten get more difficult with less resources and more need for data assessment and differentiated instruction. The unique challenge of kindergarten is that we have many, many unidentified students that enter our classrooms needing hours and hours dedicated to data tracking, accommodations, and behavior plans before ITs or 504s can even become an option. We have many students enter kindergarten that are not potty-trained. Many kindergartners even mid-year struggle to hold their lunch tray independently, tie their shoes, put on their coats. Yet we know that we must get them reading at a DRA level 4 or above by the end of the year or it will be very difficult for them to catch up in reading before 3rd grade. To do this, we need small group teaching time. In order to run this kind of instruction, students must be independent in other learning tasks and behavior management. With a 26 to 1 ratio as it currently is, this is extremely, extremely difficult. Developmentally, students at this age are very needy in a variety of ways, most of which is their need for a caring, trusted adult. I so rarely get the time I want and my 5 and 6-year-old students deserve to truly listen to them. And this is of utmost importance to me, but it is simply impossible with the number of students I have and the demands placed upon me and them during the school day. Each year that I have taught, we have increased the amount of required assessments for kindergarten. And in order to complete an effective assessment kindergarten, it really needs to be done one-on-one. We have a six-page assessment given each quarter on phonemic awareness. And since it is breaking words apart using language, it must be done one-on-one. 25 students times 20 times six pages, one-on-one, while the rest of the class is occupied and independent, is difficult. And this is just one assessment that needs to be given. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services recommends a ratio of 15 to 1 for 5 and 6-year-olds. State preschool ratio, legal ratio, is 10 to 1. At the beginning of this year, I was transferred to another school on the Monday of insert this week because my roster had 21 kindergarten students. At the new school, my roster had 23 and I now have 25. And I know that budget is always a barrier. However, I wish that 21 5 and 6-year-olds would be enough to retain a staffing position. I wish this for our students. I know our district can do better for our young scholars and I believe that by prioritizing low class sizes in kindergarten, we can start students out with strong relationships, a love of learning, and a solid foundation in essential academic and social, emotional skills. Please consider lowering class sizes in kindergarten. By doing this, you honor the importance of building a strong foundation for years ahead in each Hillsborough kindergarten's academic journey.
We still have time? Done, yes.
Okay. He's like, I spoke up a few times, as you guys know. I have a passion for education and stew my kindergarten teachers. Kindergarten is a unique battle. It's not for the weak part. The kids are learning to be learners. And for many, many of our students, especially those of underserved populations, this is some of their first experience into the academic and cultural world of school. When you take kids that maybe have been preschool, 10 to one, and you put them in a class size that is three times that, and you're asking them to do tasks that they've never been asked to do, sometimes with language and cultural demands that they've never been asked to navigate, and you're not giving us the ability to actually support them. We're wondering where our mental health cares are coming from when we're looking at equity. We're kind of shaky foundation. We get there every now and then, when you have to wait through on it, when you can't meet their needs, when we can't get the data we need on the one-on-one assessments, we can't be as effective in our instructions, we can't build those relationships, that it is killing every one of our hearts when we go home and worry about those kids that we haven't been able to build a relationship with, that we haven't been able to see the progress. Not because we're not doing our best, but because of the realities of having 26, and that would be great if it was actually there, but since they're ratios, we're looking at 28, 29, 30, kids staring up at us with very, very little support. Last time at school board meeting, there were parents that suggested that we make it up with parent volunteers. First of all, I would say I do have a very good, strong relation to the parents in my school on communication, but many of our families don't have the luxury of being able to volunteer during the day. They don't have the ability to come in. At my kindergarten and first grade Valentine's Day party, one of those events that parents love to be in, I was able to get one parent volunteer that could come in that day. I've been lucky enough this year to be able to reach up to my PTA and to past students that are needed in my classroom to be able to get some volunteers. But we can't make this up on volunteers. Our kids, especially in the schools that have some equity issues, in those schools that have been underserved, we can't rely on the community to somehow volunteer to show up. You need the people there, and we need our class size.
Thank you so much. Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. So it's been moved by Lisa, then seconded by Jesse, then submitted by Linda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. No one's in here. Our next item on the agenda is our action items. And our first item is to adopt a North Coast RESD local service plan, and that might stop today.
All right, thank you. Last month, or a couple of weeks ago, actually, we had the opportunity to talk about the service plan that the North Coast Regional ESD had put forward. And I know there's been some questions here in the last day or so regarding the fit plan. The conversation that we had a couple of weeks ago centered around is equity highlighted in the service plan to the degree that we would like to see it highlighted as a Hillsborough community. And following that conversation, I didn't believe that we had any takeaways or any action required for the 2021 school. And the reason I didn't believe that is because the process that the North Coast Regional ESD goes through is to involve all of the districts in the region in drafting the service plan that actually gets brought forward. In addition to involving the superintendent, they also involve their own board. So for us to change any of the language or to change any of the scope or the scope of the plan would require us to get way ahead of that. So in my way of thinking, that conversation had everything to do with the 21 and 22 plan as opposed to the 2021 plan. So I did not move forward with trying to make any revisions on that. It's a much different process than, say, putting something on 30-day review like a board policy, but we have the opportunity to make changes to that. This would involve including the ESD leadership in that, them taking it out to all of their various school districts as well as their school board. So if there was a misunderstanding of that, I will take full responsibility for that. I've talked to Dan, who's going to be chairing here in a minute. I've talked to Dan about what his plan might look like in the future and how we might include those equity concepts in a more front and center kind of way. But I do believe it's represented in their strategic plan. He'll talk a little more to me. The other thing I want to draw to your attention is there is a March 1 statutory requirement that we take action on this service plan and so that we can continue to access the services that are available as well as make sure that the ESD has the opportunity to add a core planning for not only the staff that they have, but for the direction that they're going. So I guess more than anything, I would encourage you to, we do want to have Dan, I have four of it, I would encourage you to continue to vote yes on this and that we wouldn't hold the ESD responsible for a misunderstanding that took place between the odds and the other uses. I believe that if we were to vote no on this plan and the ESD would take a political hit, that they shouldn't be taking the gain due to our misunderstanding. So with that, I'd like to invite Dan Ford. Yep, please.
Good for you. Well, thank you. Good evening, Chairman of the Board. I have with me our Director of Equity Diversity and Inclusion in the ESD, Marisol. Marisol's been in the ESD for, I don't know.
Long time.
Long time. I met y'all at meeting a year and introduced myself a little bit, so I know you know who I am. And I understand that there are some questions around our local service plan, but more so around what we do at the ESD and what our values are as an organization around issues of equity, diversity, and inclusion. And so I heard from Superintendent Scott today, gave me a call this afternoon, and let me know that the board has some questions around what we do at the ESD related to racial equity work. And specifically, the board members wanted some assurance that partners of theirs, financial partners especially, of theirs actually have like-minded values to what you have here in the school district. And I was like, oh, gosh, you know, I was really planning on going home to see my kids tonight, but I'd love to come. And I applaud you honestly for ensuring that your partners are like-minded. And honestly, I wish that other partners of ours help us to the same high bar that I'm expecting, that I expect that you are tonight and that you will next year, hopefully when we bring a different-looking plan forward to you next year. So again, I'm joined by Marisol. She told me, you know, like, don't do all the talking, you're going to bring me. So I have a way of doing that. I do want to highlight a couple of facts, and then I'm going to pass it on to Marisol because I do want you to understand who we are as an organization, especially if it relates to ensuring that every single kid that is in our service area, which is four counties, has a school district that is focused and engaged in equity work, that we're working on equity vocabulary. And Hillsborough has been involved in racial equity work for a much longer time than many of our school district and our school district partners. Our ESD has taken a leadership role across our region and really honestly in the state regarding equity. For instance, we are the only ESD, there's 19 ESDs in the state, we're the only ESD that has the office of Equity Diversity and Inclusion in it. The last three years, we've increased our budget on explicit equity actions by 300%. And over 20% of our leadership team, our administrators are leaders of color. And I'll let Marisol talk about her experience because there was a time when Marisol was the only leader of color in our organization. So I will get out of the way for a second and let you talk a little bit about our work. And then I'll take it back so I can make sure that they have some other understanding.
Okay, I'll be right back. So I am Marisol Jimenez. It is a pleasure to be here. And I pronounce her she, her hers. Dan mentioned that we are the only ESD with a dedicated office of Equity Diversity and Inclusion, and I'm going to tell you that that was a hard thought, that those kinds of things that you know, being here tonight, don't come easy. It takes the train moving in the same direction, right? It's like herding cats sometimes, but you've got to stay focused on the goal. And our goal was to ensure that the color of someone's skin or their zip coat does not predict success or failure. Let me say that again, because we hear it all the time, that the color of someone's skin or their zip coat should not predict their success or failure as students in school. Would you agree with that? I see a lot of hesitance, because that's really at the core of the heart of why we do what we do. So as Dan was saying, I started a long time ago at the ESD, 15 years ago almost, and I almost want to speak Spanish because it's just kind of an emotional thing, and whenever I get a little emotional, I always want to switch over to Spanish. But you know, the truth is, I was the only person of color who self-identified. And we had at that time about 45 or 50 administrators, and I looked, we'd look out at a sea of white people, largely women and a couple of white men. But there were like-minded people who understood the importance of achieving educational equity for kids. And so we started partnering, hey, we need to make some changes here, I agree. So those conversations started happening with the willing. And then in about, let's see, here is that, it was in 2013, we actually started to look at equity systemically, understanding what structural racism was. We put together an equity plan, and the equity plan called first for working with leadership. If you're familiar with the research, that's what we need to do, you start with leadership. So we launched a plan that included a lot of equity professional development, and I'm going to circulate one for the audience, too.
You asked for it.
So this is a equity events calendar for this year. It gives you an idea of the kind of work that we're doing. Our work really is focused on three interconnecting circles, if you would. Providing professional development to really work on the individual growth, is that person really moving along? Then we look at how this professional development, these opportunities to build capacity, connect interrelationally. And then we look at the systemic, where the institutions pieces. So as you can see, the kind of work that we're doing is with leadership, the work that we're doing is with concise equity teams. These equity teams are two-year cohort experiences, where we look at very seriously structural racism. And then we also provide professional development for our schools. We provide professional development for our school districts. And remember, Washington County is a county that has a lot of resources. We serve 20 school districts in four counties. Many of them are small rural school districts. The idea of even saying the word racism is something that they're just, it's just not on their radar, but we need to get it on their radar because they too have students of color that need to be supported, and they have large numbers of white students. Now, these white students aren't always going to stay in that small rural school district, I would betcha. They're probably going to be venturing out, what is their skill set around understanding structural racism? So we're really serving all kids in these 20 counties. So that is just an indication of what we're doing, and I'll keep it. I told Dan, look, if you bring me, you know I'm going to talk. One more thing to say, maybe two. So at this point now, after really working hard for seven years launching this work, you know, we're looking at each other going, spend a lot of money on this, this has been a real concerted effort for us, how do we know that we're making a difference? So we, over a two-year period of time, put together a racial justice impact assessment. And we provided that tool, survey tool, to our entire ESD staff to measure our growth around, do people of colorful inclusion? Has there been a change? Do parents feel welcome when they come to our buildings? Do people coming to Washington County service center feel welcome? Do they see the faces of the multicultural groups that are sitting there? So we're trying to measure now our success and our growth in our mission. Now, that's, we'll be getting the results pretty soon, and I'd be happy to share them with you. Last thing is, I want to say, some of the things that we're doing in addition to what you have in front of you is we are doing book studies with leadership on three really important books. One is Other People's Children by Lisa Delphite, I think you've heard of that. Zaretta Hammond's book on cultural response to teaching in the brain, and Robert Liangello's book, White Fragility. And as a matter of fact, Dan actually leads a one-hour White Fragility book study with our board for one hour before every board meeting. And that has been, I think, a really amazing experience, and I give a lot of credit to Dan for taking that on. So.
You want to talk about?
Okay. So you talked about Cafe and the Strategic Plan. And then other books that we're working on right now, just to share with you. This is what we're working on right now with leadership. We're really working on becoming more of an anti-racist, multicultural organization. Our equity policy that was passed last year actually names it and calls that out. And then in our professional learning in schools, in working with teachers, we're focused on culturally sustaining pedagogy in the classroom. All right, that's my piece.
All right. So I swear, we'll wrap this up. We do want you to have a few artifacts, not because you think we have to speak more, but there are some opportunities for you as a board that I want to make sure that you are aware of. I know Hillsborough was a longstanding member of the Oregon Leadership Network, which was a professional development group, I guess. It was a collection of school districts from across the state who met through education northwest. Well, all of that has gone away, and our ESD felt like that finding experience of bringing school districts, teachers, and leaders together to investigate issues of race and racial equity in our schools was invaluable. And so we, as a district, as an ESD, partnered with Multnomah ESD and Clackamas ESD, and these postcards are coming around right now. And we have a new alliance called Cafe, a cascaded alliance for equity. And Hillsborough, a number of Hillsborough staff came to our, to the first conference in the fall. We have another one coming up on March 11. There was about 500 people who came, so really, RESD, and RESD was the one who actually made this thing happen. We are now taking the statewide initiative for equity professional development for schools. So I think you should be proud that you have a partner that's doing that kind of work across the state. And lastly, I want to make sure we don't. So we have a board policy, and I know, I'm not sure if you have an equity policy as a board. As you know, this is my first year at the ESD. I was superintendent of River Schools. About 60% of our kids are Hispanic, Latinx. And when I got there, we drafted an equity policy, and I thought it was pretty strong. Then I started looking at this opportunity here at the ESD, and went first to the equity policy, was one of the first documents I looked for. And I really, really applaud this particular equity policy, and I think it might be informative to the board around where we stand as an organization around racial equity. Because we don't just say we're committed to equity, we're actually trying our hardest to become an anti-racist organization, which is different than being an organization that's focused on equity. It's an active stance, an interrupting stance. And so I'm really proud of that piece of work that our board has done. And like Marisol said, our board is highly engaged in book studies, and those are in public session, okay? We're talking about white fragility, which is fragile sometimes. All right, so lastly, you have our strategic plan, our LSP, what you have to adopt tonight, or what we're asking you to adopt tonight, I should say, that is a small slice of what we do at the ESD. And those are, the way it's organized, is those are the services that all members of school districts should expect as just being part of our ESD. It's a slice of what we do. We also have a ton of what we call contract services or reservation services, and those are things that people can opt into. And so I'll just let you know that what you're seeing in that adoption is a small piece that all the districts have agreed, the piece that we want to see happen. So technology services, etc. We have a full complement of other types of programming that we do across these four counties. And with that, I'll take any questions if there are, and otherwise, we appreciate your support. And I do want to urge you to put this kind of pressure on other organizations that you want to.
You mentioned earlier that you would increase your DEI spending 300%. Where would we find that in the budget document?
Yeah, so that is in our general fund. So what you're seeing is not our general fund, like, ESD, the way that ESDs are organized is very different. So you all have, most of your funding is in the general fund. Most of our funding is in grants and grants. And so in that budget document, you don't have, there is no equity thing for you to select because that's a fully internally funded structure. We don't ask school districts to contribute to any of the resources that go into that. So that's in our grand budget document, which is obviously much bigger.
So the $6 million, $50 million for 2021, is not your entire budget?
No, our budget's about $130 billion. So like, this is a small slice of our budget. So all of our equity professional development work is scaled up with our resources from other areas. We don't ask school districts to pay into that, into that work. School districts, we are working right now in four school districts doing their equity professional development. So we're in Sherwood, we're in Brenonia, we're in.
Warren County.
Warren County, and another one in the state.
Until, no, that's.
And so more.
Basically, if it's united, you wouldn't be able to see in the documents.
That's right, that's not.
Your general budget is probably public somewhere. You would find it.
Right, you would find it. And the reason is, Hillsborough doesn't need this for its service. So we don't make it a joint service that you would vote on.
Brenonia.
Brenonia.
Thank you, Dan and Marisol, for being here. I really appreciate just your emphasis on equity work and readiness with the presentation and the strategic plan. Mike is more so just to comment, as a pastor, I've had the privilege of being able to sit in on an early learning intervention maintenance before the families that I'm acquainted to. And the care and amount of level of expertise that I saw from your staff to help out this family and this kiddo was absolutely incredible. One specific thing, this family is a Latino family, and the child that was in there, he had difficulty connecting with one of the members in there. But I saw how your staff, who we hang around and brought in someone from your staff who was a Latino person to help come in and kind of help connect, connect with the child, and really ease him in the journey assessment. And I just thought that that was just such incredible work that you're doing. So I just wanted to say thank you and a further prayer.
Thank you.
I'm looking for a motion.
I'm moving the Board of Directors to adopt the resolution approving the North Coast RESD Local Service Plan for 2020 to 2021. Second.
Seconded by Sheehan. All those in favor, signal one. Seconded by Sheehan. Any discussions? Martin and Jesse.
So I also appreciate Marisol and Dan coming in and giving a pre-evening, and I think maybe I'm personally responsible for that. But as you know, board work can be plunky, so I didn't realize that this was so much pro forma, and I appreciate Mike falling on his grenade here, but the reality is, from my perspective, is this is a strategic governing document that comes before me from my endorsement, and it, to my eyes, was devoid of any reflection of the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And at the end of the day, it required an extraordinary effort on your part to explain to me why this is something I should get behind and endorse with my vote. And so I would just simply ask that as we put together strategic governing documents and ask people to really corporately get behind them, that they have a broad enough, you know, reflection of our values that is not problematic. I will be the first to tell you, I'm completely blown away by the work that you're doing, the competency that you manifested this evening, both of you speaking on this subject. I'm really impressed, and I salute you, and I wish you all the best as you go across the four counties to spread the good news. Marisol, you mentioned that, you know, the challenge is getting this on the radar. This is an opportunity. This very document is an opportunity to get it on the radar and, you know, start nudging these other boards who maybe this isn't on their radar. This is an opportunity. This very document is an opportunity to get it on the radar and, you know, start nudging these other boards who maybe this isn't on their radar. But maybe it should be on their radar because there's kids in their district who are underserved and don't feel welcome or included, or their parents, you know, have obstacles that they have to push through to ensure their kids get a good education. So, there's an opportunity there. I apologize for the interruption to your evening. I think the importance of this issue warranted this level of fleshing out the nuance that just wasn't there for me to see. And I appreciate the time to dialogue in the somewhat clunky format of a board process. Thank you very much.
Jackie.
Oh, yes, I appreciate you coming and answering the question. Thank you very much. I don't want, I do think you fell on the sword because I didn't feel there was any action needed. I mean, I, as a service provider, we don't, I mean, I guess the question is to Martin. Do you, do you want us, for any service provider that we're signing a contract with, to tell us what their DEI status is? And if it doesn't align with what we have, then are you going to not approve that? I mean, that's my question.
I don't have a response for it, Jackie. Each of us have to make up our own minds. And in the process of, again, the board process, where I had no idea this was a performant thing. I looked at a significant endorsement of this board, and I just didn't think the product that I saw reflected around was deficient, more specifically. To the point where I wasn't inclined to support it without understanding all of the background. You know, I think the answer is yes. And, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to do what we say we're going to do, we have to hold, as Dan said, all of our partners accountable on this very issue. I really do. And, you know, having this discussion is a piece of that process.
No, I agree with that. I just, I question how deep do you want to go then?
That's us.
I mean, do you want bond contractors? Do you want anybody who provides a service to the district has to have a. I don't know. I mean, I'm just trying to clarify what it is you're looking for.
I think that what we can do is probably give them this example in the work session for us to have that conversation.
I would like that.
And see what we can all agree is the amount of, the extent of the time that's going to do it. Because I do think that there is a responsibility for, when we are physical sponsors of programs, that we can hold our partners accountable to the degree of that. I think that that's something that we can navigate in the work session and have a conversation about it.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, so that one's in the tour. So, all the favors, signify by a A.
A.
All those opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstained.
Motion carried. Our next item, I'll give you that, is the acceptance of gift simulation with Michelle Marks.
The Directors, I would like to report that as of January 34th, we received a $12,000 donation from Blamette HVAC to, as part of our AER sponsors program to support extralegal activities required. That program was facilitated by Ryan Pritchett.
I move that the Board of Directors accept the donation of $12,000 from Blamette HVAC.
Second. It's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Nadira. That we accept donation, give the donations. All those in favor, signify by a A.
A.
All those opposed? And the one who cares? Okay, our next item is our student investment account, SIA application of Travis.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I really just want to celebrate some of the partnerships and the support from our community to help this plan come to be. I'm going to try to navigate the internet while talking. I just want to direct the community and board's attention to the location of this student investment account application on our website. If you would like to study this application in its entirety, you can navigate it on our website. What we did is we followed the template offered by the Oregon Department of Education, sorts of demographic information. And I just wanted to, and then it goes through our strengths and challenges as a school system, how we intend to meet those with the student investment account dollars. And it's interactive to the extent that there are hyperlinks that I wanted to highlight. First. We tried to document. I'll just start clicking. Okay, this, this is an example of over 3,000 responses. In this artifact, we consolidated the responses in English and Spanish, which totaled more than 3,200. And you can see the areas of emphasis from community stakeholders in class size reduction, student health and safety, instructional time, et cetera. And we were able to use software to disaggregate this and figure out from different stakeholder perspectives what were the most important things for us to invest in, and those were reflected in our plan.
How do we find this? I did a quick search and I couldn't find it.
You go to About Us and Accountability, or you go to About Us and Strategic Plan. There's a few places to find it. And it's under SSA and SIA.
There's many links to both sites. You backslash SSA or SIA.
And then we talked earlier in the work session about the monopoly money activity and some of the conversations we had with community members. We tried to make a photo montage here of different stakeholder groups. I wanted to give a shout out to our associations. In particular, HGA invited me to their executive team meeting to talk about this topic. And we engaged parent stakeholder groups from our PACs. We had PAC members here tonight, Native American PACs, parents who, our parents of students who are experiencing disabilities, big open house at the library, leaders from different licensed classified students, administrators in a work group. So, these are just example photographs that document some of our process so that when this is reviewed at the state, folks can understand how broad our process was in HSD. I did mention earlier in the work session, and I want to mention again, the trusting relationships that we leverage to get community feedback. We did surveys, but I felt even more importantly, as a leader in our community, the conversations that we had around tables and at pre-existing meetings like we have with our parent advisory committee members, folks who support our students and understand our school district, were able to give feedback on how these new resources would make the most difference for the students they're connected to. So, I appreciate that. Also, the language assets that we have in this district. I went to a meeting where we had 25 liaisons who worked to engage parents, and we did the monopoly money and had a conversation about SIA. And those bilingual, that bilingual team went out into the community and got feedback for helping student, or helping students and parents fill out the survey, but also talking to students in student groups and parents in parent groups to get us the feedback that formed this application. A shout out to Andrew, who may have leveraged about 500 surveys himself at Glencoe High School on paper. Our executive director of City View Charter School is here tonight, Nicole. Thank you very much, Nicole Corpez, for her leadership and collaborating with us to make sure that our charter school is part of our grant application. And if there is a draft of our longitudinal performance targets linked in here, it's going to be too awkward to look at it tonight, I think. But if board members have questions about that, I'm happy to answer those. Tom, Ruba, and Corey Sakamoto have helped me with the draft versions of those targets, which will be part of what we review with ODE after our grant is accepted. So, I'll be keeping the board posted on how the acceptance process proceeds and how those targets are set. And you'll be the first to know once we set those with ODE. Happy to answer any questions tonight, but I'm hoping that what we've done so far supports the board in taking action on approving our plan and our budget tonight.
Someone makes a motion so we can have some discussion on this topic.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the final draft of the student investment account application budget.
Second. So, it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Nadira. And I see some discussion lights up. So, let's start with Lisa.
Okay, so, thank you so much, Travis, for steering the ship for us. And moving that in a district this size, that was probably quite an undertaking. And I believe that what we have is the best that we can do for resources to be given and to be done in these environments. I think that we all know that this is not enough to cover the losses of the grant equity of the 18, 18, 14 PACs. And there are a lot of things that we still want to do. And, you know, and class size being one of them. As a parent of a first grader, that's been important to me. And that's why I worked so hard to try and avoid an increase in the class size last year. So, it's, I'm also really passionate about that. To be honest, after hours of digging into all of the information that we have, we didn't see how we can do that this time. I do hope that we'll be able to get there in the future as we get closer to KUAM. It is a really high priority for me. But all that being said, I really appreciate all the changes that have been made along the way, and the way that we have been responding. Me, I'm putting myself in there, really. But you all have been responsive to, and feedback from the community. I think that makes the plan a lot stronger. And I'm really excited about the good that we can do with these new resources. And I appreciate it from all of you.
Thank you.
Dan, do you have any more?
Procedurally, sort of how will this work going forward? So, I know the grant goes to ODE, ODE provides the non-grant, and we have metrics they expect us to meet. I would suggest our graduation rates is sort of a bit higher than some of the others in the state. So, if we see a 25% drop in graduation rate somewhere, are they going to revoke the funds for us? Thoughts on that? Is it, ODE provides feedback to the legislature on how we're doing on our metrics? Like, can you give me a little overview of what procedurally happens from here?
Yeah, I think I'll take a shot at it, and teammates can help me. The Oregon Department of Education has provided the interpretation of the law and how it'll be implemented, and they've pushed out the grant application for monitoring and accountability. So, there's an assumption that we'll get the money that we're entitled to, non-competitive grant. And then the, I do believe that ODE will report back to the legislature what the impact of the investment has been. But that would be them reporting to the legislature. Our interaction with them will be the accountability piece where they'll say, did you achieve the metrics that you established with us when you wrote the grant? To what extent did you? And we'll celebrate that. To what extent did you not? And then what are you going to change to help raise graduation rate, third grade reading rate, attendance rates, according to those long-term measurables? And that will be a collaborative process, as they call it. You know, they'll, they'll help us make decisions. Locally, we'll make decisions with a leadership team that'll monitor our continuous improvement plan and our SIA investments and watch those metrics. So, we're going to meet quarterly with a team of folks who include students and parents and teachers. We had an initial meeting a few weeks back where we looked at our stip goals. And then we talked about how our SIA plan aligned to those goals. And then, starting in the summer, when the actual grant dollars start rolling in, we'll have a meeting where we monitor that, a lot like we have monitored and reported to the board on our strategic plan.
Sure. And I know our guest speaker gave him said 98% of QVM. I don't know where those numbers actually come from. I don't think that's accurate, at least for our district. So, as we're calculating CSL for the, up for the year after this biennial, how are we sort of quantifying all of these programs and class size reductions that we've included, which would be our current service level now?
The way I'm hearing your question is that if we were, if SIA equated to a current service level, a maintenance of current service level, would we still hold ourselves to growth goals? And I'd say yes, but I think we'd be achieving those growth goals without a ton of extra revenue coming into our system. We would do that through our investment in training, mental health, program improvement. So, it's interesting, in the decade where we've been at a net loss for maintaining current service level, we've achieved a huge increase in graduation rates and some other data points that we're proud of. And so, I like to stay optimistic and that the general fund will continue to grow and sustain current service level, and SIA will be an equity-based investment in eliminating disparities and helping with mental and behavioral health. Did I say that in a diplomatic enough way?
You said it a tremendous way.
Yes.
And next to the students.
Travis, thank you for doing all of this work. I know that a lot of hours and months. I could probably say this is a year since this passed last year. It's almost been years since it passed. The Oregon research have gone into this, so thank you. I think I just have a clarifying question as to, so will this be something that we reapply for each year? And will we be able to get more funds in years ahead to fund more things that we may not be able to get this year?
Good question, thank you. My, my understanding currently is that we will revisit our application next year. And this is a year where ODE is attempting to establish a process where 197 school districts submit this application. They're going to take a look at how it went, and next year, we'll kind of firm up our plan. And then it will be reapproved, I think, comprehensively every four years, perhaps with a two-year cycle of check-in on data points. So, we're looking ahead to a four-year cycle where our SIP and our SIA plan and our strategic plan all overlap. We don't know the budget forecast, but there's not an escalator built into the student investment account itself. And so, we're not planning on there being X percent more money each year of the SIA grant. But instead, we're hoping for sustainability of what we've invested in now. It would be great if revenue from the new tax structure came in above expected and that we had more money to do more things. But we're planning for sustainability right now. I'm looking at Michelle because she knows this stuff better. Michelle has continually warned us that this is a first-time collection of these funds, and we need to be cautious as we, especially as we're looking to our years, just because we don't have any experience with it from history on this one. Thank you.
First, I wanted to thank the teachers who are here. Thank you so much for coming and sharing. I have a niece who's in kindergarten right now, and I myself have shot third grade with a class size of 33. So, I very much do understand the importance of lower class sizes, especially in the younger years. It's always incredibly valuable to hear from parents and from community members who are advocating for different areas. And I do believe that the plan that we have right now is reflective of the best that we can do is, as Lisa was saying, with the resources that we are given. And hopefully, this is truly just a start. One question that I do have, and this is kind of taking a step back and looking at the SSA in general. I know that we have three different buckets. We have Measure 98, we have the Early Learning, and then we have the SIA. I'm wondering how much of a voice we will have as a district with how learning dollars are spent, or even the Measure 98 dollars are spent? I guess for specifically the teachers who have spoken about the support in kindergarten and having students come in ready and prepared to learn. How much could we address some of those concerns with the early learning bucket of the SSA?
So, I appreciate the question. One clarification of the three buckets, there's the SIA, then there's the Early Learning. And then Measure 98 falls into a bucket that's a catch-all for like 15 different state initiatives. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but that includes investing in teacher pipelines, Measure 98, nutrition. There's a bunch in that one. And so, the extent to which we'll be involved in each of those is big. Mike and Holga and Kelly are involved in the Early Learning piece. Mike and Olga and Kelly are involved in the early learning piece. We've got Nate Rodell in charge of the, our approach to the nutrition piece. Mike and Brooke and others are involved in the teacher pathways piece. They won't, in my, the board won't directly approve any of those pieces, I don't think. The SIA piece was the one that was uniquely lined up so that its local school boards were informed, involved, and approved that piece. The others will function more like the grants that we run day-to-day in the school system. Mike, did you have anything to add?
I was going to, I've been trying to get Olga's attention, but she won't look at me. Olga has been very involved with the early learning side of this and has done a tremendous job running preschools through this week, and just a number of preschools we have is absolutely amazing. But Olga, could you just say a few words about the, what is the definition of early childhood, of early learning, and how we access those dollars in what our current plan is?
Yes, thank you, Mike. The early learning certainly does not count as a, a little bit different than the approach that we're using with our own district plan. And so the state is in the process of allocating so many slots per district. And so those are the slots that we each district will be dealing for. I believe that in our district, we have between 132 and 133 slots, not in our district, in our county. And so those are slots that will be spread out throughout the different programs that provide services to early childhood learning. And so the good thing for our district is that the existing programs will continue to be supported, so those are additional slots that we will be requesting. We have a projection for the next two years that will influence our early progress by three or four each year. And so that's our hope, and we are in the process of making our applications to the state, the ODE of course. And we should know by the end of April, beginning of the end of the year, how many of those slots will be able to access. But in addition to the funding that comes in to higher staff, we will be requesting some management funding to support families and, you know, further professional development and, you know, resources and facilities. So I'm hopeful. I think that, you know, we are functional, and we are in a position to allocate the facilities and the resources that we need to be able to open additional opportunities.
Thank you, and thank you for the clarification. I know that so far we've been so focused on the SIA, but when that proposal goes through and even if it becomes approved, could be requested maybe or reported out for like presentation? Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
I also, as I said, with our teachers that come out, I know that it's difficult having, having that way, and I understand it's not just the class size, but it's also, like you mentioned, a lot of the kids that come with trauma, that come with issues where they're not able to be ready to learn because of that, and that's really hard. And it's something that is really near and dear to my heart, but I know to all of my board members that understand that our kids need, need a lot more. And, and it's, it's hard that we would put into this position where we have to choose, like, where can we impact a little bit here, a little bit there, try to see how much we can do with it. And really, I'm really hopeful with the amount of funding that's going into mental health. And I feel like that's a big area where I'm hearing all the adverse childhood experiences, the trauma, the social emotional learning that these kids need to. How can we impact that in, in a way that this, this SIA plan is really, there's a big component that is intended to address those mental health issues? And so I'm really, it's hopeful that this impact will be felt in the classroom. And I know it's not the exact outcome that we all want, but I hope that there's some relief from those services that are going to be impacting schools and classrooms. So I thank everyone for coming out. I think Travis and the team for the engagement and our board for our engagement as well and going out to our communities and listening and talking to students, talking to parents, because it's really all of us are in this together, and so we're trying our best to make sure that we move forward together. So I think all of you through your work in this whole path, through the discussion, all those in favor signify at the same time?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, Karen. Our next item on our agenda is our award contract review project. How do we do it?
Good evening. Back in January, we awarded three roofing contracts. We actually had a fourth, kind of fifth award on that agenda, but we pulled them off because of some confusion with the bidders as to whether or not that was meant to be a single award or a split package. We have since worked with the, with each of the bidders, and we're now ready to award this contract for the Century High School and Northern Big Picture Roofing Bids. And so you have that information in front of you, and if you have any questions, I'd have you to answer them.
I'm going to let the board of directors approve the contract for the summer 2020 Roofing Project at the Century High School and Northern Big Picture, Big Picture to Schneider Roofing in an amount of $1,000,438, $138,000.
Second. So, second, when is your last meeting, Jackie? Karen, the session. All those in favor signify at the same time?
Aye.
All those opposed? And Michelle, Karen.
Thank you.
And Karen. Now we are going to recess our regular board meeting, and we are convening our local contractor board meeting. And our first item, yes, to that one.
We are prepared now to reward, or to bid out the last three of our new elementary school gyms. These will be at McKinney, Latators, and Jackson Elementary Schools. We're using, we're proposing to use the same CMGC process that we've used on the last three, and that we've used on several of our other projects, including for the elementary school. And in order to do that, we'll need a specific exemption from the Oregon procurement laws so that we can go through with the construction manager, general contractor, the procurement method. Good answer, any questions? I need any of this information. Should look pretty good.
I'm going to let the board of directors, acting in the capacity of the local contractor board, approve the findings of facts supporting a specific exemption from repetitive bidding requirements for using the construction management general contractor process for interior innovations, site improvements, and major mason projects at Latators Elementary School, the K L R School, and Jackson Elementary School. Second.
So had the meeting by Lisa and seconded by Deera. Is there any discussion? Speaking of discussion, all those in favor signify at the same time?
Aye.
All those opposed? And Michelle, Karen.
Thank you.
Now we're journeying our local contractor review board meeting and reconvening our regular board meeting. So our next item on our agenda is reports and descriptions. And we have Michelle with our financial director.
Directors, I am always excited to share with you the narrative of what's happening in business office right now, and what we're doing to support our administrators as instructional leaders. Happy to answer any questions you might have about that. Also, our cash flow report got a little too tiny this month, and so I'll be working through it to make sure that our formatting makes it a little bit easier to read in the future. Any questions about that as well?
We have a couple of questions for you. Michelle, we'll start with Mark and Jackie.
It's not really Michelle, but yeah, so students' report falls in here. I know we asked about this before when we saw a spike because of reporting. We're seeing a dramatic decrease now. Is that because of reporting again, or are we actually like seeing through our students?
It is. And so the spike that we had noticed before was caused by a new electronic reporting system. And with that system came the ease of reporting and also the requirement that all claims were recorded. So every mom and girl who's happened on a credit card, she's got many, many incidents. And over the course of the year, we determined that it made more sense for the data to be kind of tiered into three different levels of head injuries. And so what we're seeing now is the kind of need attention, so it's much more meaningful, although it makes it challenging to look at longevity. It will make sense this time next year.
Jackie?
More so statement of the question is, I really appreciate the examples of how your business office collaborates and works together. I really appreciate that, and I think that that's something that often gets overlooked. So I really appreciate you sharing those, those stories with us and how we continue to work together. So thank you.
Thank you. We had a great team there.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, our next item is our first meeting, number 21.
This is so exciting. I'm very excited that's going to happen. And I say that because we've been in the, I appreciate your patience, directors, as we've waited to work with our union and get information together and adding to our calendars. I just want to thank the association for their support in regards to that. And just kind of point out some key differences between the calendar in terms of the situation page, you kind of saw some of the information there. And then on the actual calendar, this coming year, we're starting five years later, five, not years, five days later. It may go like five years, five days later than we did this year, so we're starting on September 8th. And so just that additional five days moves everything along with the calendar, and then also being in a leap year also makes an impact as we're designing the calendar this year. And we have decided in conjunction with our license association to increase the number of days from 191 to 193. We're adding two instructional planning days, which align with the work around the English language adoption and just in general the need and the desire to have additional planning time, but through a guided process. And so we're looking at October 30th and February 1st during the year as instructional planning days for licensed staff to come together to work on those things. And then in order to do that, we had to make some changes to the October staff development. So if you look at October, typically the 8th would be the day you would have staff development and work day, or staff development for secondary, and then a non-contract day. We determined that we would move that to the front of the week so that we would have contiguous student contact time until the end of the month, where we would have the instructional planning time as we move to finishing up the first quarter and going into the second quarter. And another interesting part of November is when we observe Veterans Day, and so it is in the middle of the week. So we will end the quarter on the 5th of November, have grade prep day, the students would go to school on the 9th and 10th. Then we would have a day off as observed, to observe Veterans Day. Then elementary would have student conferences, family conferences during that time, and then secondary would come back to school on the 12th, and with the contract, have conferences on the 13th. But some of our schools, as they vote and make decisions, they also try to accommodate more evening conferences. And so I predict that we will have some of our schools choosing to use the 10th evening as a time to afford opportunity for families to have conferences and also on the 12th. As we continue into the rest of the school year, you'll see that we will end the first semester on the 28th and then have our grade prep day. And we put the instructional planning on the 1st, followed by the teacher prep, which is a part of the contract. And then we have eight days to start our new semester, followed by President's Day, and then we continue on into spring break. As we go into ending the third quarter on the 8th with the grade prep day and work day for elementary, we continue the rest of the year, and we will, you can see that we will end the year on June 18th by adding the two days on to the end of the year, which will be early release, and the last paper teachers will be on the 21st, 22nd, 23rd for inclement weather. Now, I know you might be thinking that the year is ending on the later side, but I want to remind you that we are starting five days later than we did this year, and so that, I like to go back and look at other calendars. So 2015-16 was a calendar that I used to help guide some of where the placements of things to kind of anchor us in determining how best to put this together. I appreciate, again, your patience, and I just wanted to see if you have any questions. Because of March, you'll have an opportunity to vote to adopt this.
Connor, thank you for taking this with us together. I actually looked up the 15-16 calendar about last week because I figured that it would be very much similar to this 15 calendar as well. I think if there's anything I am slightly concerned about is that the numbers vault day, having those votes for elementary only. Knowing the seats I do, knowing just the general sort of high school movement, I can tell a lot of fellows who are sort of starting to get where we're going with this, that there might be some, but I won't say a lot of, some are many high schools that probably won't go on this fall, but we have another school day and then a school day and then another school day. I guess if I'm going to take a proactive approach, I'm wondering is possibly to move that October 30th instructional planning day to the 12th somehow to congregate that? Or do something so that we can maybe have that contiguous 11th off and then the 12th off, and have the secondary level as well, and then the 12th off?
Thank you for that feedback. That's something we, but certainly we've considered a lot of different things as we've looked at this calendar and trying to find time during the first quarter and moving into the second quarter to find the best spot for that instructional planning time, but that is something we certainly can look and consider as we move through this calendar.
Thank you, Connor.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is the language arts adoption process of business trust.
Thank you. Just a quick update. Next time on March 17th, we're preparing to share a couple of years of work with the board related to our new Arts adoption. Starting in 2018, we formed a study team, and we've gone through the process of evaluating our current program for language arts and then setting goals for ourselves. And then this fall and winter, we've been doing a lot of work to pilot and figure out which materials we're going to propose for adoption. Those have gone through the CCAC for approval to come forward to you. And tonight I just wanted to give you an update because we haven't talked about it with the board, but on March 17th, what we'll see is a giant website that documents all of the history of our project, shows data related to student performance, and then data related to our pilot process. And then we'll have teachers and leaders with us to talk about what our plan is for professional development. And then we would ask that the board would consider doing the 30-day review process and then approving that plan on April 14th at the work session. So it'll be a normal interval for a 30-day review or 27-day review, and then we would ask you to take action at that time. That timeline will give us time to purchase materials, both digital materials and then all the paper that we can get shipped to our schools so that teachers can have the materials in their hand to start professional development in the spring through the summer and then launch next year. So that's just an update on timeline and what to expect from us, so.
So I had the opportunity to go to the Little Arts, I think it was the showcase at the Elder Public Library.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Yeah, I was very pleased by the material that was presented. It's very culturally diverse literature that's being presented to elementary schoolers, which is something that is something we need as a district if we're going to move ahead and ensure equity diversity amongst our student population. I was also pleasantly surprised to see that in addition to English language arts, it would also be an adoption of Spanish. it would also be an adoption of Spanish language arts. And that there are several ways that you can arrange it so that students are taking English and Spanish at the same time. Am I right on that?
Yep, dual language.
Okay, yeah, dual language. And then I guess overall, the people who presented from, I think it was Journeys or Wonders, sorry, for what's the?
Wonders and Maravillas.
Okay, thank you. They were very thorough in their presentations and were super nice, which doesn't sound like much, but coming from the student's perspective, the fact that the actions were my question seriously, I think says a lot about how their curriculum showcases what students need. So I really appreciate that. And I would recommend when the time comes that Michael, that be an order to approve the little arts adoption. Thank you.
This is the language arts curriculum for which we just asked the state for funding in the SIA, right?
Yep.
So there's the connection there?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Travis. Again, I think I really thank you, Andrew, for going and attending. And I'm excited to learn more about it. And I think that as we diversify our materials, it's not just good for students of color, but it's good for all of our students to see that. And so I'm really excited that that adoption is coming and we get to carry all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, our next item is education.
This is, this is not something that you need to take action on. This is informational only. But as you already did in the process of updating our policies for, well, for a long time now. And we're getting closer. We only have, we only have a couple of batches left, so we're getting closer. Again, this does not require action, but it does give you the opportunity to see those administrative regulations that have been updated that don't require action. And just to get those under radar in case, in case you have any concerns about that or any wonders about it. Just wanted to get those in the know.
Mark?
I know ARs don't require action, but so are these part of the OSBA review?
They are.
So I mean, the alternative education programs are pretty specific to us. So I, G, B, H, A, whatever. So every, they vet our language related to our specific programs and make sure we're in compliance or whatever?
Yeah, they basically make sure that we are being compliant with what's required to be in data.
Okay, good. Thanks.
All right, our next item on the agenda is HSD, the HED Awards.
I just want to talk about the classified employees. And that not all of our classified employees work directly with children. And we have a poster that hangs in our office that describes what we are, what we do. It says, "We clean it, cook it, fix it, dry it, paint it, type it, schedule it, plant it, file it. And we support love and relief in our students." So we are a huge part of HSD and we're proud to be part of HSD. We know that the teachers do appreciate us because they tell the classified members daily, "Thank you for being here. Thank you for being with our students and thank you for helping with the class size issues that we have." We support the SEAs and the EAs, both support the teachers that have the larger class sizes. So I know that you approved the final grant application for the SSA, SIA. I guess they're going, I was going to keep about that for a little bit. And I want to thank you for all the hard work on that. That's not easy decisions to make. And so thank you for reaching out to all of the different parts of the people who have states and this. So thank you. I would like, as we're moving through this process and as we are looking at, I'm kind of messing with my own little thing here now, so if I repeat myself, I'm sorry. I know that we've started staffing, which is earlier this year than in the past, I believe. All right? Good. So I would like to ask that when you're looking at that, that the staffing for classified is looked at. We've had several positions, like 26 positions were lost last year. And many of our classified SEAs and VAs and many others have lost hours over the last few years. So I'd like to see, you know, we'd like to see if those can be added back or in the backup, help support the teams, help support classes, give the students the people in the classroom to support them, that can sit and listen to them. I'm hearing the stories all the time about how the SEAs and the EAs and the custodians and everybody else that hears these kids, they're jumping in and helping and really stopping a lot of crises that can happen. One today said that they overheard some people, kids talking about hiring bodyguard students to avoid being attacked. Well, she handled it, but only because she was in a classroom of 80 students and she happened to be in the right spot, the right thing. And then that's only off script. I just, but we have, some of our assistants have been reduced to student contact time and some are less. So when they're coming and going from a classroom that's in process or in progress, it's a big disruption to them. And then at times when the teachers are relying on an assistant to be working with some of our most vulnerable students, they're not there. Not because they don't want to be, but because their time is done. Their hours are done and they're going home. Or they're going to the next class or the next assignment. We have media assistants who have to piecemeal hours put together just to get to their hours that they've had in the past. So we've got middle, high school media assistants that are down to three hours in the library, which closes the library, so teachers and staff do not have access to these rooms. And then they have to be, they're being part of an EA or an admin support just to get up to their hours that they have. I heard today about a custodian's position that is being filled by subs because nobody wants to apply for it. It's an eight-hour position. That's great. But it's four hours at one school, two hours at another school, two hours at another school. So they're doing a lot of travel time. So, um, so I would like to ask that when you're making these staffing decisions, that we can try to put people in single positions and not piecemeal them and put them together. Thank you.
Hi, this is the HED president. Thank you. Thank you for moving forward the SIA grant application. I'm very excited. We worked really hard as a team to come up with something that I think is pretty amazing. And I want to say thank you to the kindergarten teachers that are still left here in the audience. I know they worked all day and I feel that we're still here. And I really appreciate your solidarity and coming and supporting your students. And I truly believe that if there is money left laying on the table, that I believe that the class size and the needs will be supported. I know that we were heard. I went up here several times talking about Kinder at first grade. And I know that tonight, the kindergarten teachers were gracious to hear this well. And I know that as we move forward in this journey, we don't know if we're going to have some extra money. But like Mike said, we did brainstorm as a team. And I heard tonight that that still is an important part of that list and I appreciate that. Thank you for that. I wanted to share that Read Across America is next week. And the National Education Association in the past has really focused on Read Across America with Dr. Seuss books. However, that has changed this year. And we're still having the Read Across America, but instead of piloting the Dr. Seuss books, the ask was that we look at books that are more diverse. And so if you go onto the National Education Association site and look up, you'll see a lot of great books that have a lot of diversity, which goes exactly into what Eric was sharing tonight about those we're working on. So I encourage you all to get out into the buildings and if you have an opportunity to read in kindergarten class, it would be great. But thank you for everything and I'm looking forward to getting that application in quickly and getting it back successfully and spending the money.
Thank you. Next item is discussion. We'll start with those students.
Okay, so I was telling Andrew that this meeting is very important for working on the little course this week. So thank you to that whole row. It was very important, I guess. But I know I have these children, Wesley, Juan, Lee. They want to stay on Friday. And we are also having play. I'm sorry, but I don't know when they, yeah, but I don't know when they play. Other than that, senioritis is happening really hard.
I'm not feeling senioritis. I'm not a senior. I'm feeling whatever juniors get where there's too much going on. That's where I'm at. PCC is right in the middle of our midterms right now, so I know at least I'm, you know, just making it work. All the early college students are, registration for classes opened up this week and next week, so a lot of us are getting in there, getting into our classes. I had an opportunity to go visit Miller Big Picture the other day and I went through, it was for a meeting with Mark and some of the other people from my board committee, but I went a little in early and I talked to the students. Things are, you know, they're settling down over there. It's been a little, it's been a crazy year for Big Picture, so like things are sort of getting into a routine. And then other than that, I mean, those parts.
I just still have not yet come up with words to describe how fantastic, amazing and energetic Columbia School's production of Billy Walker was. The amazing cast and thoughtful second floor work made me feel like a kid again. I actually went to a bookie school since I was in elementary school and I've attended theater productions regularly since I was a freshman. And this was the single best bookie production I have seen. I was actually mad that we took an intermission because I was so invested in their work. I will be attending the show again this Saturday. I would like to formally invite my fellow board members and community members to attend the show. The cost for purchasing tickets online is $12 rubles and $7 receipts and can be purchased online at showfixforyou.com. Tickets at the bar are $15 rubles and $12 receipts. Correction, $10 receipts. This production in device is why I continue emphasizing the need to fund our arts, which is that no other species can manipulate color, sound and space and communicate emotions like humans. I highly recommend that all of you attend this production. Thank you.
Now, we will allow you to our super and junior's final.
Thank you. Just two things this evening. First of all, I continue to appreciate the participation from the board in our student visits and what we've been doing at the, at the various schools. The last couple that we've done would be a visit to HOA as well as Miller Ed. And it's just such a good opportunity for us to hear from students in unfiltered and very frankly. It's always, it always does us good to hear how, what's going well at the school, that they're, they're taking on improvements that we've made that would make the student experience even more positive. So I appreciate you all being there, being part of that. Also, I'd like to thank Travis for being the team leader on this whole SIA little project that we've been engaged in for the last, for a long time now. Just appreciate the leadership on this and the manner in which you pull not only the folks together in the aisle that you're sitting in, but the broader group as well. Special thanks to Jill and Melody for the conversations that we've had and the adjustments that we've been able to make and where the dollars are located. We would love to have more dollars to address things like more additional classified hours as well as class size and we hope that those dollars can be. So I just wanted to thank Travis and everyone who's been involved with that. It's been an incredibly thorough process. Appreciate it.
And then we have our four candidates. Start at Matthew.
I attended the Miller Ed listening session and the students, they keep it real. It's great. I wanted to stay longer, every week have more time. That was really great. We attended the Rose Rose Foundation gala, an auction on Saturday night, Roaring Twenties. That was really great and to see the amount of money there is is just phenomenal. I'm so excited to see how they end up sending that. Yeah, that's it.
Hostings this year for the auction were a lot easier than last year. I had someone who was in a scarecrow outfit last year and all had their front suspenders and a hat.
Totally.
Exactly. Oh, this year? Oh, last year?
No, this year was.
Roaring twenties.
Sorry, twenties.
Yeah, so much, much easier. I think I probably knew this number before, but 4 million over the course of the 20-year existence is just an amazing number that the community has given to the foundation, which they have now in the school. So it's easy to say that the foundation provided that, but it's not the foundation in vacuum by themselves. It's everybody in the community coming together to do that. So yeah, it was a great event. Always a great event. And I just want to say, like, I spent the last three months with my primary focus caring for an alien pet. And I, that situation resolved. So I'm letting you all know, I'm back on the clock. I don't think I was derelict in any of my responsibilities, but also was probably not as focused as I often am. So I'm back on the clock. Feel free to hit me with whatever you need. So there you go.
Okay. So the HSE segment was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. I love meeting and with other people who are really excited to help kids how they need the classroom. So I love doing that with you all every year. It's one of the highlights. At least the people that we get to talk to pretend like they really care about the kids and the schools and the work that they do. And then we get to call them on it and look at them during the hour raise. So it's a lot of fun. I really enjoy that. And so they put memory map, this kind of thing. And then I want to say I really appreciate the folks from the HSD company and sharing the information with us. I know that was not a planned presentation and I thought that they handled that really well with a lot of praise under pressure. And I definitely appreciate all the information that they shared with us. I really appreciate the details. So please do make sure you pass that on to them. And also what incredible work that they're doing and I'm really proud to call that part. So that's awesome. And then thank you, Andrew, for feedback on the arts materials. I really value your perspective and your opinion and I think you're very elegant when you share about those materials to me. And I really appreciate your thoughts. And then the very last thing I'll say is I remember, I think that it was before I was even on the board, when I was kind of starting out with the CCAC, the leadership team was doing this saying that, I feel like Cameron, Jane was telling us, there's this pie in the sky, skies, biennium, reinvestment dream. Because, you know, we still had this hope, and this was six years ago or whatever, seven years ago, that the legislature would reinvest in schools after all these cuts, right? And it was up in the wall and there's step-by-step plan for each biennium. And of course, none of that ever happened or came to fruition. We did continue to have to cut, which was a very depressing chunk of time. But I will say that while this SIA process was different, I think a lot of those, those goals that you all had and that we had in that time for really serving kids the way that they deserve, probably found their way into this in other ways, this SIA plan. And so I'm really excited that we were finally able to move the needle, even though it's not where we want it to be, but a lot closer. And I'm really excited that we were able to say yes to that tonight.
I'm super bummed. I couldn't go to the HSE calip, but I'm so glad that it was such a huge success. That's always really good to hear. I had the opportunity to join Mike today at the HOA student listening session as well as get a tour of the facilities and the community transition services facility as well. And it was just a mind-blowing experience. And it reminds me of the important work that we have to meet. we have to meet, to meet the needs of all the students in our district. One of my favorite quotes that came from one of the students during the listening session today was, "No matter how big or how small, every child fits." And she was talking about feeling a sense of belonging, being a part of the HOA community and how some of the bullying that maybe, you know, she or her peers had experienced in other, other areas, you know, her coming here at the HOA, she was able to feel like it was a sense of home, a sense of belonging. And I thought that that was just a beautiful picture of what we want all of our students to feel like by the time they graduate and even, you know, by the time they step foot into our, into our schools is, you know, no matter how big or how small, you know, every child fits and I hope that is something that every student of ours is able to say.
So I had the opportunity to, with Erica yesterday, to attend a census training slash presentation. So the census is held every 10 years and is super important to how the federal government funds things like schools. So I would ask that, you know, board members are interested in hearing about it and seeing if there is something that as a district, like we, that would fit or something we can do or just having that knowledge of the census as elected officials and trusted members of our community so that we can answer questions because as we know, usually the communities that are most underpaid are those that are, that are, you know, communities of color and underprivileged. So really just being able to get an accurate count and making sure that we're helping with that endeavor, I think is super important. So I don't know for a future board meeting if other board members are up there.
Especially we with our, especially for Title I and almost Title I schools, it's really, really critical. So I agree with you, you're completely on, do what we can to make sure an accurate count in HSD. I want to say thank you very much to all the cabinet and staff who engaged with me on my various questions about ARs and policies, Dale and Rose in particular, thank you. And I also wanted to shout out to Beth who engaged with OSBA. OSBA actually had pretty significantly wrong in terms of flag displays and salutes and Beth went down there and straightened them out and I really appreciate it. Turns out there is a statute that requires the display of the POW MIA flag and, you know, where you can. And Casey, moreover, has done a great job actually doing that and I, it's really important. I pulled up an article about World War II repatriation of Remains that were just given to an Oregon family last year. In my, in my military time, I had an assignment at Hickam and that's where the POW MIA center's located. And so every time a Remains came back to the United States, there was a repatriation ceremony on the tarmac at Hickam. And it was a standing, standing order that if you were available, you went and paid your respects. And so this really means a lot to veterans and certainly that small, but, you know, important part of our community who still have people missing in action. So I really thank you, Beth, and thank you, Casey. I had the, also the pleasure of attending with a number of my colleagues, the HSF Gala was super fun. I also had the pleasure of attending with some of my colleagues, all free of the state of city addresses. And I would just like to encourage everybody to go to those when you can, you know, we really focus as a district on serving the whole district and, you know, a big piece of that is Hillsborough proper, but we do have North Plains and we do have Cornelius and of course we have, I incorporated Washington County where I hail from. So, and I can tell you, when we are there, we're introduced and other people see us there and are, it's really appreciated. And when it comes times to engaging with the community, if we have some currency and, you know, that's a way to add small investments to that account, is show up and things like that and support our other elected leaders. And by the way, they were all awesome. It was actually, it was actually a four-city address because Cornelius was joint with Forest Grove, so we got to see Pete Truax too, and that's always a lot of fun if you don't know him, he's the mayor of Forest Grove. Really, really worth our time. In fact, even Mike was called out by name in a crowd of several hundred at the Hillsborough State of the City address. So when we show up and participate, we are acknowledged and recognized and appreciated. So thank you, Mike. Lastly, Casey Brown's a great long-range planning committee, the LRPC, and I want our board colleagues who've empowered me to attend on behalf of the board that that committee continues to be high-functioning. All the cities are there and including Washington County because there's quite a bit of work going on there. And the macro message is the same, it's declining, we're just not, the kids aren't there. And so you can see it, we heard it earlier today, but when you attend the LRPC, you get a sense of that too. I think in the coming years, we may be in the odd position of opening new schools and facing cuts for declining enrollment. And that, that's kind of a budget nightmare. So, you know, I don't know that that's going to happen, but those trends are, those trends are discernible at this point, so I think we're, we're well-advised financially prepared for that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I think I also really, when we show up to spaces where we're, what a state of the city and we're able to engage with other community leaders, it's also just an opportunity to kind of like nudge them a little bit and tell them the things that are affecting our school districts, that they might have impact on and that we can possibly partner in Washington County, you know, our families experiencing homelessness or affordable housing or mental health services that our families need and how can we as elected officials advocate for our district families to other agencies that govern those services. We really have to utilize our, our ability of influence and try to get them to engage with us and work in a better partnership and develop a relationship. So that's the task that we need, that we are trying to do and I just kudos to all of our board members who constantly have been going out and showing up and participating and listening. It's quite our responsibility and I feel like it's one of the things that this board is really good at and I just wanted to acknowledge all of you for just continuously that showing up all the time. So thank you for that. I also, thinking about what Lisa said about the SIA, it's, it's, I know that it's difficult to make these decisions and it's sad when we have to, have to consider different things, but at the same time, we're not cutting anything this year. And that is just like, that in itself, like, oh my goodness, it's such a relief that we are not cutting anything. Like this wasn't that realization, not that, because it's just been cut after cut after cut. And for the first time, it was like, wow, okay. It's a good problem to have, even though it's not that navigate, we're not cutting any, you know, we're not doing a budget cut this year once. So that's, is something I wanted to reiterate to our board as we navigate these difficult decisions. Again, with the census, one of the things that we learned yesterday is that beyond also just communities of color, which are harder to count, renters and children zero to fives always have continuously just not been counted or getting miscounted. And if you think about our district and how we get funding and those little ones that are going to be 10 years out in our district and if we're not addressing those, even, you know, women that are pregnant now, those babies count already. And so we need to count people in our community so that we're able to allocate those resources. So I would definitely agree with my local members that there's something that we can do as a district to ensure that we're sharing that information with our communities or something else that we can do. I know that the libraries are becoming like hubs where people can go there and fill out the census information, you'll have people at those locations to help them walk through this now for the first time, you can do it online. So that's going to be just a way for us to share information and also partner better to get, get the word out. This is going to be a huge challenge for our county and this state to make sure that we count everybody. I also wanted to say then, just thankful for Northwest Regional ESD for coming out and presenting. It is kind of a clunky way of us trying to get information because this meeting is so formal, so it just makes it a little difficult to get information and ask questions in a way that is more organic, but we are just very grateful that they were able to come and show this information, which is really helpful to all of us and I do appreciate that we have these, they're hard discussions, but they're really necessary when we think about how DEI work actually has to permeate everything that we do, even contracting, even, you know, every type of service delivery, it just has to be something that is in our DNA as a district. And so I think it will help and to have those conversations and I do agree with my local. We should have those conversations about how do we make sure that that lens and that that work is just across everything that we do. So I'm just grateful that we have those, that we can bring that up and that we can address that in the future board meeting. And lastly, I just want to say, and I'll close with it, I just want to say that PDU is such a good. Ha. Ooh.[1795.69]